Okay, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting, February 4th, 2016. Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has our prayer, and we have a troop that is going to do our pledge tonight.
Good deal.
Okay, if you would, please bow your head with me. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, thank you for the many blessings we have on this day. Please be with those who are sick, those who are struggling, those who are homeless in our city. Please be with our police officers and our firefighters as they do their challenging job. We ask that you protect us with health and as our needs be. We also would like to send up a special prayer tonight for Madeline Skels Harris as she continues to improve. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Okay, we've got, we have troop 441 from Christiana, the Mars Hill Church of Christ in Christiana, and these scouts are working on their Communications merit badge. We have Alex Blair and Austin Blair who are at the podium. Thank you for coming tonight, gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice of all.
All right, thank y'all for coming tonight. You have several items that are on your consent agenda. If there's no questions, I move we pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have three meetings worth of minutes in front of you, January 7th, 2016, January 14th, 2016, special meeting, and January 14th, 2016, regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Hearing now, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ-65 to zone an area located along Blackman Road to Highway Commercial CH District and Commercial French CF District Benjamin Sykes and Thomas Meadow, applicant 2014-427.
So moved.
Second. Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ-68 to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 91.5 acres in the planned residential development PRD district located along Veterans Parkway, Sheffield Park PRD, Beazer Homes applicant 2015-426.
So moved.
Second. Motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ-69 to rezone approximately 3.9 acres along Otter Trail from residential zero lot line RZ District to residential multifamily 16 RM 16 District approximately 2.1 acres and from residential multifamily 16 District to residential zero lot line RZ District approximately 1.8 acres. Swanson Development applicant 2015-428. Hey, folks in the back, if y'all don't mind, if we're going to have a conversation, if y'all don't mind going outside, that'd be great. Thank you.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ-70 to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 22.5 acres in the planned residential development PRD district located east of Casey and Lane, Three Rivers PRD, as indicated on the attached map, Green Trails LLC applicant.
Move for passage on third read.
Motion of second. Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
No.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. New business, consider letters or recommendations from the city engineer. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I do have for you three items tonight. The first item is a change order for Veterans Parkway Phase 2B. The project is nearing completion, and during the course of the construction, extreme wet conditions in the area necessitated additional undercutting that was originally estimated in the project in order to remove unsuitable material and replace it with off-site borrow material. In addition, we use crushed stone wedges were used more extensively to improve the safety during construction by reducing the pavement edge drop-offs. The bid price for the project was $7,626,740.75. There's been a one previous change order for $291,940. This change order, which was for the additional quantities, was in the amount of $497,355.23, will bring the total construction contract to $8,416,035.98, which remains below our original project cost estimate of $9 million for the project. We recommend approval of this change order.
Mr. Griffith, years ago when we built Northfield Boulevard, there were some spots in there where we had unsuitable base, and we fixed it and fixed it and fixed it, and finally we had to dig it up, so this will prevent that from happening.
It will. We followed a lot of the same items that we used to improve Northfield. The second time, we followed a lot of the same techniques, if you will, on this section of roadway, so we feel good about it.
Okay. I'll move for approval.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Just because I'm not very smart, I don't understand this stuff very well, but does, when something like that happens, are we bound to use that particular firm that's actually doing the work, or do we, do we ask, I mean, are there other, do we go get a bid for this new job, or this part of, this new part of the job, or do we just kind of have to take whatever price they give us at this point?
On these particular items, we actually had, there were quantities that were actually in the original construction contract, and we actually had very good prices for them, but you're very, it's a good point, Councilman LaLance, we sometimes look at our annual contracts to see if we have better prices, and we can do it less expensively through those. This contract was actually bid, it's a little over two years old now, and it was, we're still getting very, very good unit rates on our projects, but yes, our contracts do allow that if we can go in and do it with our own forces, or go in and do it through our annual contracts, do allow us to be able to do that.
Okay. This is a $500,000 job, basically, if you're just looking separately, it's a pretty big job that we, I was just making sure, so you feel like that's definitely the best way we could have done it, is this way, and we weren't bound by any contract thing, right?
Yes. Yes, I do believe.
Good deal, thanks. I'm ready, Melissa.
Here we have a motion.
I've got the motion.
And Bill's second.
I have a second. Ms. Wright, you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Second item I have is a contract for the design of John Rice Boulevard from Old Fort Parkway, and I actually have a, that's incorrect, it should be Old Fort Parkway all the way to Fortress Boulevard. Whenever we redid that intersection there, we renamed that to John Rice Boulevard all the way to the intersection, and the mapping that I'd used originally was incorrect. The proposed project consists of widening of John Rice Boulevard from its intersection at Old Fort Parkway all the way to the, its intersection with Fortress Boulevard. The project will connect the improvements that we did with the Fortress Boulevard, Mans Pike-Gresham Lane intersection project, and will connect those back, having a three-lane section all the way to Old Fort Parkway. The improvements will result in the widening of the commercial collector, as outlined in the advanced planning report that was completed by SEC in June of 2010. The project is recommended due to the significant increase in traffic and to improve safety along the route. The design services will include survey, preliminary, and final design of the roadway, preparation of exhibits, and descriptions of, for any required property acquisition, bidding services, and construction administrative services as well. The contract will be on a time and materials basis with a not-to-exceed amount of $281,342. We recommend approval of the design contract with the funding from the TML loan, subject to review and approval by the city attorney. That I have to answer any questions.
I want to say, just for a quick comment, that every month that I'm on WGS, I'll have four, three or four callers who will call and ask about this section of road, and so I think it's a very needed section with the traffic that we now have, that being a collector street to come from Medical Center Parkway, so very glad that we're doing that.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
The final, excuse me, the final item we have for tonight is the construction contract for the Maple Street Alley reconstruction. On May 27th, 2014, the city received bids for the reconstruction of Maple Street Alley between West Main and West Vine Street. The purpose of the project is to provide a hard surface for the alley and to improve storm drainage and to relocate existing utilities underground. The project is recommended in part because several businesses along the alley have experienced some damages and/or inconvenience from flooding. Due to a lengthy property acquisition, the project was placed on hold until all required property was obtained. The low bidder on the project, Rollins Excavating, has informed staff that they will honor their bid prices that was submitted in 2014. We recommend awarding the contact, contract to Rollins Excavating in the total amount of $245,617.50 with the, with the funding from the TML loan, and it's also partially, I might add, from the Stormwater Utility Fund for the Stormwater portion of it, subject to review and approval by the city attorney. Happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, while you're up there, I sent Mr. LaLance some photographs this morning. Did you get those photographs about the Gateway Pond?
Excuse me, he spoke to me about it, but I actually, I've not had a chance to look at the photographs, but I actually, we did, one of our engineers did go out and take a look at it, just to assess it.
Yeah, we currently have three dropouts out there right now, and, you know, I think that, at least from my perspective, we need to come up with a strategic plan, not just how to fix these three holes at this point, but we need to come up with a long-range plan to answer what our future plans are as to what we really want to do with this situation that we've got out there, and in your investigation, if you would, go a little deeper to try and advise us as to, I know, I'm not asking you to predict where the sinkholes are going to be, but, but an option or an alternative that might be a plan that we could go with that will kind of stick a hole in the bottom of the whale if we can.
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to.
Thank you. Fill a hole in the bottom of the whale, not stick a hole.
Okay, we'll now move into recommendations of the fire and rescue chief on approval to purchase network, video conferencing, and telephone system equipment and services. Chief Ox.
Mayor, members of council, this is to approve a video conferencing network and telephone system upgrades to our fire stations. All nine stations will be impacted as well as purchasing of some backup equipment for the stations. This will result in, it's around $219,000 and change for the purchase. We'll be using savings from 2010 capital improvement budget for the fire department. This, doing this, will do a couple of things that'll actually result in a savings of about close to $10,000 a month on our landline telephones by joining the voice-over-internet protocol telephone system that the rest of the city is currently on, using the fiber-optic network between the stations. In the past, the insurance service office required dedicated phone lines that are very expensive, you have to pay mileage on those lines, as dedicated lines between the stations as a secondary dispatch point. Our current fiber network meets that requirement for ISO, and so we're no longer in need of those high-dollar, expensive mileage lines, and so we are, my recommendation is that we take those lines out and result in that savings will have no net negative impact to our insurance service office rating through such. Will also result in be able to do video conferencing, which will leave our companies at the station to do a lot of our lecture-based training. I think I've mentioned this to you all before, this will keep our trucks in the stations, will spend less fuel pulling those trucks together for training, as well as keep them, our response times faster by keeping them in the station doing this training through this effort. I would be happy to answer any questions for you.
Chief, is that $10,000 a month, is that, that's an ongoing expense that we're going to be saving?
Yes. Our current phone bills are very close to $11,000 a month. The phone bills will reduce down to approximately $1,000 a month.
So 21 or 2 months, and it's that simple, all right.
Yep.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Chief Ox. Ms. Wright, any beer permits? I'm sorry, consider recommendations of the city manager for professional services agreement to assist with legislative issues.
Mayor McFarland, members of city council, I'm bringing a recommendation to you to engage the firm of Farr and Bates to assist us with intergovernmental relations and assistance in bills before the general assembly, but not just with the general assembly, there are other intergovernmental issues that we deal with. They could be CSX, the Corps of Engineers, TDEC, TDOT, so getting a firm to assist us in these matters, we think makes good sense. Farr and Bates comes highly recommended, they represent a number of other cities in the state of Tennessee, and I've got an agreement before you. While the services may say that they'll, when you assist the city with intergovernmental issues, I can assure you, their reputation on the hill is very robust. They'll also give us reports each week about various bills that are important to the city, so we look forward to working with them. Should you approve this contract, Mr. Farr will be here next week for your legislative session with the delegation on 5:00 next Thursday, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. LaLance just made a comment to me about a story that was in the paper talking about the lobbyist, and I guess Mr. Broden referred to it was, we're primarily getting it for annexation concerns. That's not really the case, is it?
There are numerous issues that we need assistance with. There's taxation issues, there's planning, police.
Education.
Education, right now there's some very significant issues with education, so this is not solely focused on annexation, I can assure you.
Right, and that was the point that I wanted to clear up, because I don't want people in the public to have the perception that we're doing this purely for annexation reasons. We're learning how to deal with the annexation problem that we currently have, and if it never changes, we'll adapt, and last night we had a very lengthy planning commission meeting, and not only are we adapting, we're learning how to, I think the developers are starting to adapt to it as well, because we're seeing more construction going upward than we are going outward, and that may be a good thing. I mean, there's, there's situations where we've got blighted areas that by not having the sprawl situation, that it can be advantageous to the city to actually have development forced back into the city, so, so, you know, I don't think that our intentions of getting a lobbyist have really very much to do with, that might be one of the issues that we address, but it's not the reason that we're taking on a lobbyist.
That is absolutely correct. There are multiple reasons that we could use the assistance.
And I think, you know, one of the things that Mr. LaLance briefed us on in a memo, that there are so many other municipalities in our, in our state that do the same thing to be able, you know, the, the issues in Memphis are much different than the issues in Murfreesboro.
Exactly.
And when we have legislatures, legislators from west Tennessee who may not know what we're dealing with in Murfreesboro, it's good to have someone who can be able to sit down and explain that to them, so.
Yeah, being a former member of the TML board three turns, the TML, Tennessee Municipal League, they do, you know, you know what they do, you know, they, they do a really, really good job, but the culture of the legislature has been slowly changing probably below the last eight years, and in some of your larger cities, there's a lot of things on the legislative agenda that, that doesn't protect us. The loss of the Hall income tax, which is, that's going to happen. That's about a million dollar hit to the city in Murfreesboro, so, you know, these larger cities really need to have their own specific lobbyists to address the things that are addressed to us, because all cities in Tennessee don't face what we face, and when you have one rep that kind of compares the voucher situation to what's going on in Memphis, that's like daylight and dawn, so something's going on down there, and I think this is a good move.
This is a flat rate, not an hourly rate for their services, is that?
Yes, sir.
And how are, can we expect like quarterly or some type of report as to what services they have rendered us, or how is that, since we haven't done this before, I'd like to...
Sure, you know, but we'll get a number of pieces of communication from, from the firm. I think since we started talking to Mr. Farr, he calls me about every day.
Okay.
For instance, the bill that the council asked to be changed, the number of readings from three required readings to two, that was before the House Local Government Committee this week. I called to find out, did I need to be in attendance, because we didn't want to send an impression that we asked for this legislation to be changed, and the city was there, Mr. Farr said, "Don't worry about it, I'll take care of it." We'll get weekly reports about bills that potentially could be important, and then on bills where we will put a specific spotlight on because there's a concern for the city, I imagine we'll be getting calls, asked to come up and maybe testify alongside him, and then we'll get written materials back from him, and if we need to get some quarterly reports, we'll be glad to. I think the level of communication we're going to get from them is going to be exceptional.
And I hope that there's a way for citizens to go on the website and look at the bills that might impact cities, so our citizens, if they want to, they can email, or call, phone, you know, wherever, say, "Hey, you know, I don't think I like it." "Oh, I like it." Either, either way, the public's got, is going to have to get more engaged in these processes, because these things are happening, and eventually it's going to cost you, so we'll call somebody, so I hope we are able to do something where we can, citizens can go online and say, "Hey, what's going on down there," you know, and get involved.
Mr. LaLance, is the, is it for an 11-month period that we're...
Yes.
...talking about today?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, from, you know, when we look at these things as far as dollars and cents, you know, $33,000, $35,000, one little piece of help that we get...
Absolutely.
...from this, seems like it would more than pay for the, pay for this and buy a long shot, so.
And I look forward to you all meeting Mr. Farr next week, I think you'll be impressed.
Long overdue.
If there's no more questions, I'll move for approval.
Public health legislators will be here in this chamber next week at 11:00, at 5:00 or 11:00, at 5:00, so face-to-face works better than phone and email, I tell you that today.
Second. A motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any beer permits, Ms. Wright?
We do have several tonight, Mayor. We have an application from the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce for seven networking events at various locations around the city. We have a special event for Kamari House, for fundraising event on February 13th, and we have a special event for the Discovery Center at their location on December 1st, 2016. Those are all special events that have met our requirements, and we recommend approval on those. We also have an application for a convenience grocery market at 2122 North Thompson Lane, Suite E. That's an ownership change, so there's already beer at that location, and that permit is approved by our building codes inspector, so they've met all of our requirements, and we can issue this permit if you approve it. And that's all we have tonight.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have a few board and commission appointments. You have a reappointment on the Gateway Commission for Mr. Rick Sane, Mr. Tim Tips, and Mr. Harold Yocely. On the Board of Gas Examiners, reappoint Mr. Joe Duncan and Mr. Bart Ring. The Risk Management Committee, reappoint Mr. Lee Moss. We have those before you now.
Move for approval.
I don't know about the Yocely board, but I'll go on a second.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. For a future meeting, I would want to point out, after 19 years, Dr. Payne Hardison is retiring from his service on the Airport Commission, so we are going to have him at the next council meeting. Mr. Gerke has a presentation, but Butch Jones is going to take Mr. Hardison's place, and we'll have an honor for Mr. Hardison at the, at the next, next council meeting.
I had to be able to serve him for a little while, and, great guy.
Any statements?
None tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Other business from the staff or city council?
I have two quick items, just to ask the council's opinion, one on public comments. I think it may be good for these next couple of meetings without any objection to hold the next couple of months, the, start the meeting at 6:30 as opposed to 6:45. I don't like being the bad guy to ring the buzzer on everyone, but I think it would be good if we have 30 minutes to let, an extra 15 minutes to let people speak, and if we can, you know, judging, engaging on how many people want to speak, if we want to, if there's not many people here and we want to let people speak for five minutes, we can, but if there's a lot of people who are here, you know, three minutes will at least get us 10 people who can, who can speak, if that's acceptable to everyone.
We should always have time to listen to the public, and if we, if we need, do we need to put that in the form of a motion?
It's an election year too, so it brings out different kind of folks.
Yeah. I would make so, if everyone's okay, I think that, that'd be, yeah, so, Ms. Machado, at our, our next special meeting for March, we'll do that at 6:30 if we can advertise that, and also I wanted to give you some information on our solid waste issue that we've been working on. working on. City staff is taking the lead, and we are putting, I talked with several different, all the municipal mayors and the county mayor, and we've put a lot of work over these last 18 months to figure out what we're gonna do, or try to figure out what we're gonna do, but we're to the point now that we really need to engage professionals who will tell us, this is sort of the direction we would like to study and head, so we're going to put an RFP out on the street to have solid waste consultants, who that's what they deal with. And then the other mayors, and this will be coming to the city council, to get the other municipalities involved, they are all gonna participate in the RFP, and it will be, each municipality will pay based on what their population is within the county. And I think the good thing, that gets all the municipalities bought in and working towards that one common goal, so that'll be coming to us as soon as we get the RFP back.
Yeah, the RFP is being drafted right now, I hope by first part of next week, and to be ready for the city team to review. Once we think we've got it in good shape, then we would wanna share it with the county, Smyrna and LeBurn, and get their input on the RFP, perhaps at a joint meeting, and then once we're all good with how the RFP is constructed, then we'll advertise it and seek proposals.
Mike Nolan and Joey Smith have done a phenomenal job on working all this, but, you know, it seems like every meeting that we have, there's a new technology that, we're almost like the movie where the dog, someone yells squirrel, and the dog goes a different direction, so we really need to start fine-tuning in, and the concern is that, you know, when we started this 18 months ago, Middle Point was at a 12-year lifespan, and then it has gone from 10 years, and now it's to eight years. And what we don't wanna end up happening is, two years from now, we look at it, and we're at three years, and we don't have a plan in place, so I think everyone's committed to working on it, but wanted to keep you updated on that.
Mayor, also, with the understanding that Murfreesboro is less than 3% of what goes in the Middle Point landfill, that's not really Murfreesboro's problem. It is Murfreesboro's problem, but it's a much greater problem, and we need to make sure that every community's understanding of what our approach is, and they need to be taking the same corrective action, because we're not unique in the sense that we've got an upcoming trash problem.
Sure.
And it's going to affect not just us, but certainly all of middle Tennessee, and people who are driving, I mean, there was a truck came through the other day that had sludge from Atlanta, and, you know, and they were bringing it to Murfreesboro, and the question is, why would they be bringing sludge all the way from Atlanta? So, you know, but we certainly aren't unique in the situation that we're in, so we need to make sure that we're reaching out and seeing what the other cities are looking into as well.
Great point.
Yep. It's a nationwide issue, so, you know, we're not the only ones that face this kind of thing, so I applaud the mayor and whoever he's worked with, Mac and Joey, for taking the lead on this kind of thing.
All right, any other? Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.